So.
That is fine Laurel, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order.
I gave you the lion's share.
I will start with a roll call of council members to establish a forum.
Yep, Amber Brown, I, are here.
Chelsea here.
Tricia here.
And Vicky?
Vicky, wanna cut here?
Laurel?
Laurel Hill Ward here.
Okay, I think that is it. Do we, would somebody like to read the invocation?
Glad to be.
Thank you Susan.
I'm sure I really have to read it, but there we go. This is our school, may peace dwell here, may the rooms be full of contentment, may love abide here, love of one another, love of our school, and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school.
Thank you Susan. That takes us into agenda modifications, does anybody have agenda modifications? Okay, hearing none, audience to address the council.
I would, I would like to.
Is that, okay, great, and I will just remind you that this is, during this time is an opportunity to address the members of the council for items that are not on the agenda. And you will have a maximum of three minutes and just to be, and I know you've been here before, but just to, you know, for everybody's information that the council cannot respond to any items you bring to us during this period. Okay, go ahead Alicia.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I'm just here, I'm a, my name's Alicia, for those of you that don't know me, mom to a second grader in Ms. McDonald's class. And I just want to give a shout out, she's not here, but I wanted to give a shout shout out to Ms. McDonald, Kate McDonald, second grade teacher, for doing such an amazing job right now, she is supporting diversity and inclusion at Blue Oak by celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month in our classroom by reading aloud books to our kiddos that feature Hispanic culture and heritage. And it's just been so awesome to see her embracing diversity and inclusion and equity in the classroom, so I wanted to give her a shout out and a big thank you for that.
Great, thank you Alicia. Do we have any other audience members to address the council? Okay, seeing, no, I'm just checking to make sure your hands, did I miss anything? Okay, seeing none, we will continue on, that brings us to item two, the consent agenda. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you Amber with the motion, do I have a second?
This is Tricia, I'll second.
Thank you Tricia. Right, I will call for the vote, Amber? I. Tricia?
I.
Laurel?
Laurel, I think we're still on mute.
I apologize, I lost myself, I took away my face while I was eating and then I couldn't see anything, but I.
Thank you, thank you Laurel, Vicky? Vicky, you're on mute.
Vicky, wanna cut, I.
Great, thank you Vicky, and Chelsea, I. Excellent. And so that takes us down to item three, governments, we'll start with 3.1, Amber with the finance committee report.
Oh. I forgot I was gonna have to do that. Um, just the highlight. We talked a lot about our enrollment numbers. And, and I think that we lost about nineteen students, which was a little bit above average, lots of different reasons, I know that every individual student got called and it was kind of split, there was a lot of that moved out of state, there was a lot that wanted to stay home with COVID concerns. And, but yeah, that was definitely something to think about, then we also went over substitute teachers, and that were, currently we were paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour and we wanted to up that to two hundred, which is what Chico Unified is doing, so there's, I think we have that on the agenda to talk about today.
That was per hour?
Per hour, yeah.
Per day.
Per day, oh, I'm sorry, per day, sorry.
Vicky's like, I'm going back to teaching.
I'm going to work.
Per day, sorry, in a long day.
For two hundred bucks an hour.
Yeah, yeah, so basically Chico Unified School District, that's what they're paying. And, and we were paying considerably under, we were at a hundred and twenty-five a day, they had gone up temporarily to two hundred a day. And so we talked about doing that as well.
Is that, is that because of just the shortage of substitutes?
Yeah, the shortage of substitutes and being able to have high quality substitutes when we need them.
Great.
Um, this would be on a temporary basis that we were, we talked about going up and matching what Chico Unified is doing. And I think we talked about historically, we're usually a little bit higher.
Yeah.
So, we're still gonna like, we're gonna be competing with them now, at least at this rate, so we looked at what's that that was gonna look at, look for us for the year, and it's gonna be a little bit of an amount, like thirty thousand dollars, I think, extra. Um, but if any year we have the money to do it, it would be this year, I guess is probably a good way to put it. And it's sort of one of those things that I don't think we can get around. Um, that's a huge difference between us and Chico Unified, so I know that that's gonna come to the board today. And so we talked about that, and that was pretty much it, that was probably the highlights. Um, oh, the, the grant or what's the money that we're?
Which you approved, the, we got a grant for around two, two thousand dollars for cameras.
Cameras, yes, for vandalism.
On your, in your agenda package.
Yeah, so that was the other thing, and we got that grant and that's gonna pay for the whole cost of the cameras and to help, because I guess we've had some vandalism, so. So that was our cameras for the students or like security cameras? Security cameras.
For external.
They're external.
Yeah, and primarily for when we're not here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's basically what happened, we had some juveniles decide that it would be fun to climb on buildings, and they did, caused some damage, so they were caught, we know who they were, but cameras would have been helpful, and the police asked us before to have cameras.
Yeah, I know that makes a big difference, and especially in knowing ahead of time that it's happening and not you know, days after the fact.
Yeah.
When we drop to school and some things, graffiti on the side of the building or something like that, yeah.
Um, yeah, and I think the only thing, other thing we kind of talked about a little bit was when students are gonna be out for more than a couple of days, what that process is gonna look like, so I don't know if we're gonna talk about that here, doing the homeschool, or I guess independent study. So we did touch on that a little bit, I don't know if that was really relevant to finance, but.
It is.
Okay.
As we get our money first.
Okay, yeah, so that's probably why we're not.
It's a changing, yes.
No, it's, yeah, and I know that just at the last meeting, right, is when we reviewed and discussed, because there was, there's some legislative changes.
Yeah.
And you do have.
Yeah, and I've already utilized independent study this year and messed it up already this year, so I'm glad we're talking about it. It's like Kelly told me how I picked it.
Yeah, and how it was relevant, you're right, exactly, to the finances, because we're not, you know, the students are gonna be absent more, that's definitely going to affect our members and our income and, yeah, so that was a major concern, how we were gonna handle that this year and yeah, nothing was really resolved, but it was talked about and it's definitely on our radar.
Great. All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know if you're gonna be talking about cameras later, but I just had a question when that came up, is now the time to ask about the cameras?
Um, sure.
Yeah.
So just as a parent, I have questions about where those will be outside and where they'll be aimed at, is it like around the doors for security? First question, and then second question is, what about privacy for our students if we don't, you know, necessarily want them on the camera? Wondering what will happen to the video of them, if it is, you know, panning where they are, say in recess or coming in and out of school? And then who will be looking at the video, like how will it be stored? Or is it only a twenty-four hour thing and then it's deleted? Just wondering, you know, what's happening behind the scenes with the security cameras?
I don't have a lot of specifics on answers on those, I can tell you that the primary use of the cameras will be when we're not on site. So the, the purpose is building safety when we're not here.
So will they be on during the school day?
Um, I can't tell you that right now. That was not their intent. So I haven't discussed that with, but to know what the plan is, generally if we do have, would have cameras, they would be confidential information, so it would not be something that would go out publicly.
Will there be time for a larger discussion on the cameras to answer some of these questions when you decide, you make decisions about them?
Well, we will be having the cameras, we need them for insurance and police purposes. But as far as how the camera, and how that will be used when students are around, we can report on that further.
Great, thanks.
Great, thank you Susan, and so that will take us to 3.2, parent council report, Tricia?
And yeah, so parent council, a lot of it this time around was parent reps and electing those, there wasn't a lot of decisions made because we were unsure teachers heard from somebody else other than them, so I still feel like that's getting washed out, or it was at that point, maybe it's been decided now. And also.
Parent council still fully virtual, or are they back to virtual?
Okay, yep, everything's virtual still, and then also a chair, so taking, so we're doing that chair position, there are some people that are interested, which was fantastic.
That's great news.
That is great news, so I think that we'll find somebody.
More than one people.
There's some people that are willing to do it, so that was good. And then discussion about harvest festival and open house, which I know now has changed a little bit, and I think we're, I don't know if we're talking about that more again today. And then the courtyard that Ms. Claire's working on, so and the money that is gonna go into that to revitalizeing the courtyard here in the middle, which is, I'm excited, she's super excited about it, she's looking for help to do that, so if anybody's interested in that, but I think it will be really nice, it is kind of like this.
Karen, yeah.
It is something that could be so pretty and like, so.
So that's cool, so for a minute I was trying to think what quarter now, when you said we invested, it clicked. The donuts, yeah.
The center of the donut, the donut pole. So I think that's exciting, and she's super excited.
A lot, yeah.
And passionate about that, so, and hopefully I can help her in there, get it done, so those were kind of the big things.
That is very exciting, yeah. Alrighty, are there any questions on the parent council report? Seeing none, and that takes us to 3.3, Susan, with the Equity and Inclusion Task Force Report.
Right, well, we had our first meeting this last week, and it really was great to be able to be together and discuss these issues as a group. Very, very cool, and we made the decision that we would report the the work of the task force in the A Court on a monthly basis. So, so as to keep that information out there. We've talked about Lindsay Clipfelt, who is working with us this year, she's a past Blue Oak teacher and with a focus on equity and inclusion from the LA area and charter school down there, and so she's working with the faculty primarily on improving and looking at changes to the curriculum. We made some adjustments, some suggestions to the dress code were made to directly address hate speech and derogatory language in the dress code, so that was done. And, overall Claire is taking over the lead in the the task force, and so we're really pretty pleased at the movement forward.
That's great, thank you Susan. Too many questions or comments regarding the Equity and Inclusion Task Force Report? The men, that'll take us to item 3.4, and that is our Charter Council Community Member applicant, Leanna Glander, and she is here with us tonight. Susan, for this, is it just a matter of us voting?
Yes, you need to, somebody needs to.
Nominate.
Nominate, and then.
I couldn't remember if it was because there's not, because there's only one, if it's a nomination.
We still need to nominate and vote for it, and so Chelsea, would you like to introduce Leanna?
I would love to. Yes, so Leanna is a friend of mine, we have children that do sports together and spend their free time together often. And I'm really excited to, to have her potentially join our board. And she has, well, I'd love for her to talk some about herself, but she has a background in educational field. Working with, as a counselor in high schools, so Leanna, would you like to say hello?
Hello, everyone online and here in person.
If you wanna, there we go, then you get a, it's Leanna.
Hi, um, my friend Chelsea had asked hello, he waves, if I would be willing to to apply for this position, and I was excited for the opportunity and to be asked. And I know some students who attend Blue Oak as well as a few teachers and staff, so it's excited for the opportunity, I do have a background in education, I have a master's in educational counseling and a work in school counseling, as well as my family who are all either teachers or professors or things of that nature. So I'm excited to potentially join your board.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you for applying.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Thank you for the rich background you bring to Blue Oak. That's, she says.
Thank you Chelsea for asking.
I have been asking her and she finally had the the time. I was, I was going to say the space in her schedule, but she's finally agreed to make the space in her schedule, she didn't really have it, but to, to share her expertise with us, I'm very excited about that prospect. And, so with that, I would like to nominate Leanna Glander for a community member seat on the wheelchair council.
May I second that?
Yes you may Laurel, thank you. All right, so that brings us, if there are no further questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, Amber?
Amber Brown, I.
Chelsea, I.
Tricia? Tricia, I.
Laurel?
I.
And Vicky?
Vicky, you're on mute. Vicky, wanna cut, I.
Thank you Vicky. Okay, so, so now though, you are on the board, so you will be included, thankfully I made sure that she had her, took it ahead of time, just in case this were to happen. Because you'll be able to vote on the next item. So. Yes, welcome. Yay, alrighty, and we were very fortunate, Leanna was actually able to attend the Brown Act training, was on last week, yeah, so she's really hit the ground running in preparation for being a part of our boards, I'm really excited for that. As well, because as we all know, that can be tricky. Sorry, I'm losing people, and so that takes us to item 3.5, and this is our policy review for the COVID-19 policy, independent study policy and safety plan updates, we'll do those one at a time. Did anybody have, I know these were part of the packet, and so I'm hopeful that everybody had time to look over them. And did anybody have any questions or things that they wanted to address regarding, well first regarding the COVID-19 policy?
Nothing's changed on this, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, I'm just gonna get to the right side. Okay, so seeing no questions, comments, or discussion.
I see.
Oh, okay, sorry, go ahead, Thea?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if this is, well, related to COVID-19, I'm not sure if it's the policy or, or whatnot, but just curious about reporting school cases. And, and as a parent, just wanting to know when there are cases at the school. Yeah, that's all my comment, so I know they have to be reported to the public health, but if there's any discussion on making those publicly available or available to the school community.
Okay, I was gonna say, I know I saw that, but I think it was part of the COVID-19 response, but Thea, I appreciate your question. And that is part of item 3.7, so we'll be addressing that shortly. Thank you. I'm pretty sure it wasn't in the policy, okay, so, does anybody have anything specific to the policy? Alicia, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, so I noticed at the top it said masks will be expected indoors by students and for all staff in the presence of students. And I have to say that my son is home for the second week because of exposure to COVID, and you know, this is hard to say, because I think it's gonna make me unpopular, but I'm looking at y'all sitting at school together, close, without masks on, and I just, I'm disappointed, because I feel like why not wear the masks even when the students aren't there, because we're trying to keep everybody safe? And my student, again, my son, is home for the second week, missing the school play, they have to reschedule it this Friday. And it's just, it's frustrating as a parent to see that, because it feels like you're telling our students to do one thing and you're not practicing the same.
Thank you for your input.
I had the same thoughts, Alicia, thank you.
Was, was that Brooke who just spoke up, I, I maybe lost it, who, who just said they have same thoughts?
Sorry. No, thank you Brooke. I had the same, I had the same thoughts regarding mask wearing as Alicia. And also with a kid home for the second time uh, since school started. So, that's all.
Um, do any of the board members have any discussion points for this? Okay, no, is this something that needs to be approved or? Yes, yeah, because it is a second reading. Okay, so then I will entertain a motion if there are no other questions from the board. I will entertain a motion to approve item 3.5.1, the COVID-19 policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Yes, go ahead Laurel.
That's okay, please, please know that I would have been happy to just second, but I moved to approve 3.5.1, and I, I know it's a bit awkward when I'm not there, thank you.
Oh, that's fine Laurel, sorry, I missed the hand up.
No problem, I'll second it Laurel.
All right.
Amber Brown.
Can I ask a question though, before you do that, please?
And actually, actually Alicia, because we have a motion on the table and the discussion is closed for the audience, because that time has passed, and we do need to move forward with our vote. And, but we do have some more discussion on the COVID-19 response under item 3.7. Right, so I will call for the vote, Amber?
Amber Brown, I.
Chelsea, I.
Tricia? Tricia, I.
Leanna?
I.
Laurel?
I.
And Vicky?
Vicky, wanna cut, I.
Thank you. Right, that takes us to item 3.5.2, independent study.
This is again a second read of the independent study policy, there are few changes somewhat, just changing from district to Blue Oak when, when that was missed before. And the update, which now this independent study policy as presented by the state allows us for even one day of school to do independent studies, so that's the, the only real change to the policy is that change from two days to one day.
Which is fantastic. And previously, just for your background Leanna, and charter schools do, or in the past, have had slightly different requirements allowed for independent study in district schools. So in the past, we were authorized to do two or more days, and if a student was out, like going to be out for two consecutive days, as long as they requested it on the first day of their absence. And, excuse me, but this, as you just heard, now we can do it even if only one day absent, which is huge, because also just some real quick background, charter schools don't operate on the previous year's ADA monies like district schools do, we're in current year, so if we have any sort of decline, then we have to, like, immediately make budget cuts versus districts who have a decline and have a, at the following year to make those, so being able to recoup any money for any day's loss, like, impact us very immediately, so.
And I thought I read that they, you can basically just email the attendance email and request independent studies, is that correct?
Well, I know, that's possible, I know that they just came out an email via Parent Square to be able to, like, pre-apply for the year, and then you can just request the specific dates, so as long as you have that master agreement that covers your year, then it makes the process for the individual dates waste.
I went through and did that for all the kiddos, so I saw that, but I, but I thought something about how, so what would the parent process?
You can just email.
Just email a tenant.
Attendance, yeah.
That's, that's very, isn't that easy and helpful, they're not here and can you get independent study ready? That's great, that's email, that email process is gonna make it a lot easier for parents.
Yeah, it definitely.
This is Laurel, this is Laurel, and I, it's got so impactful, and I think such a positive thing. And, and I'd like to note that, I'm sure Susan, you've, you've thought about this and done a good job with this, but I think it's just very important that the parents be very clear on that policy, and sounds like you've smoothed out the process for them, but you know, sometimes parents may not know, and I, I think that's very important information, thank you.
Great, and then I did, I did just want to clarify something, I did see Sarah, your comment in the chat about responding to audience questions. And there is a period of time, and we'll get the information on a, an agenda item, and then and, and those facts will come in, then I will ask if any audience members have any questions or comments regarding that item. And at that point in time is when the audience is available or has time available to ask those, I mean, it does fall under the three minute and timeframe, so you have three minutes to, to request information or provide input. And then that, when that time closes, when there's, the parents are finished providing their input, then the board members have the opportunity to discuss and at that time, and then we do call for a motion and a vote, so that's that is how the, the agenda runs, so just, just for that clarifying.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, so with the independent study being presented this is the time now, do any audience members have any questions or comments for the board regarding the independent study policy? Alicia, you have three minutes.
General feedback on getting this information and having the time to look it over and be ready to ask questions. It usually comes to us an hour or two before the meeting starts. And I don't know if it's possible to send this out earlier, but between working and parenting and dinner, I never have enough time to, you know, read all of the extra documents and then come up with questions before the allotted time. And then I'm in the allotted time and then asked to, you know, read it, think about it, come up with questions to support or not support it. And I'm just finding that I don't have enough time, so this is just general feedback. Wondering if we can get this information earlier than an hour or two before the meeting itself.
Yeah, we, so on Friday, when I send it out publicly, I'm gonna make it public on the website as well.
Okay.
And then the, that's just kind of a reminder that I sent out in Parents' Square for. Perfect, okay, thank you for that clarification, Alex. So Alicia, I'm not sure if you've heard that, but the documents, so they are provided to the board the Friday prior to the meeting, they're also made public on the website. So you do have access to them as of the Friday before the board meeting, and when the agendas are posted. So that, where you're seeing them in Parents' Square, that's actually just a reminder that the meeting is happening and just another link to that information, but it is public on the website.
Great, thank you.
And I will add, there will be a few items, or two items, that came out yesterday and today. So that does happen at times when we can't get them out by Friday, but that is our goal, and our larger items are usually up on Friday afternoons.
Yes.
I just had a question about the end of the study. Is that temporary?
One second, and just for a point of order, I want to make sure that we have all the audience in first and then it'll open to the board, thank you. And do any other audience members have questions or comments regarding specifically the independent study policy? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and open it up to the board, Leanna.
Oh, my question is, is the one day or more, is that temporary, just during this time, or is that?
Um, that is a good question, it is currently for the 2122 school year, I would have to look to see if they've expanded it beyond that for the one day, we're usually two days. So it's not a big change for us, it is a big change for some of the others.
Government says we can do one day, so we'll, we'll take it for as long as they'll let us, I guess. Yeah. So I guess that's the answer to your question, great.
And then how are we informing parents, are we doing it through our teacher, I know some teachers have let us know, is it somewhere that we're putting it in the newsletter or?
Totally sent out the email.
Just the master agreement, though.
Would that say one or more days?
I don't know if it's specified, I don't think it's specified.
I don't think it does specify one day. Primarily because the one day is mostly gonna be connected to classroom issues. Yeah, no, I don't know that we've done that, we probably need to.
Great, no, that's, that's a great question, great question. Laurel, or Vicky, did you two have any questions or comments?
My only comment was, I like it.
Great, hey, that's, that is excellent, we like to hear that.
I second that.
All right, well, seeing and hearing no more questions or comments. And I am ready to entertain a motion to approve the independent study policy.
This is Trisha, I'll make a motion to approve the independent study policy.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Trisha, with the motion, and Vicky with the second. Now I'll call for the vote, Vicky.
Vicky, wanna cut, I.
Chelsea, I. Laurel.
I.
Amber.
Hi.
Trisha.
Hi.
Leanna.
Leanna, I.
Sorry, I tried to do it in a different order and then I messed myself up.
That was perfect for my order.
I should get the order from you and then I can just do it in that order and make it easier. Okay, so 3.5.3, the safety plan update on air quality.
This was, was, has become a bigger issue over the last two years or three years with the fires. And so we have basically followed previously what was the indoor resource for rain. But the yardstick of the AQI, we realized was really important to put out there so people knew how we were making that decision, so this is an addendum to our safety plan to address air quality. And we will use the airnow.gov site to monitor it, to help us decide. This is the same site that you can unify in other schools and districts in the area and use. So we will call a, an indoor day if it hits 150 or above 150. And again, that's the standard in education, I checked, I had Natalie checked with other districts in the area, and she said that's what we're doing. It is unsafe for all at that point. Even though children, and Buck explains that here, even though children are considered sensitive group, the measure is heavy exertion outside, which is determined is, is two to, at minimum of two to three hours, which we're not doing. So, so that's why we felt that 150 was a good number. And, and we've had a few days where we have had to be inside, but with the number 150, it, most days have, this year have been, we've been able to be outside, this was important for the children.
Thank you for that, Susan. And do we have any audience members that have any questions or comments regarding the safety plan, air quality update? Thea?
Yes, um, thank you for, for taking up this topic and I, I just have a, a couple of questions. I, one, I guess the first one is that the air quality tends to change or can change in our area throughout the day and it sounded like this, that it would, I don't know, maybe be checked at eight in the morning or whatever and then be called for the day, or is this more of a fluid thing? And then related question is that the airnow.gov gives our, is the average, a time-based average over 60 minutes? So it can be high, and then, you know, for a part of a time, and then low, and then it's average to, to okay versus the, some other resources such as Purple Air, which has recently had simulations to be, actually, Air Now is now taking some of their data, which is like a 10-minute average, so you get a more real-time air quality on that, I guess, so just a couple of comments or questions on that.
Thank you, Thea, I'll let Susan address your question and then we'll go to your version.
Yeah, so we do, first of all, monitor, monitor it throughout the day, we usually make the decision, for example, about 20 minutes before the outdoor recess in the morning. And then if the air quality changes before lunch, we will also make that adjustment. There are a number of sites that we looked at and chose airnow.gov because it's been, one that's been consistently used, we, there's no way, there's no way to, you know, even even looking at Chico as a whole, it might be different depending on where we are in Chico. So there's no really way to be totally specific to whether or not the air quality at Blue Oak Charter School is exactly what Air Now would say. So it's, you know, we, we monitored about three different sites and chose Air Now to be the most regularly used and the most consistent.
Thank you for that, Susan. Alicia, did you have a question or comment regarding this item?
Yeah, just wondering, but then, well, I was wondering about filtration, but then I was wondering if you're already doing extra filtration because of COVID? If you're adding any sort of extra filtration inside because of smoke and ash and worse air quality outside?
So we did with the, the decision to come back on campus last year, did up our, the filtration system we used and improved the filters themselves and replacing them. They do all filter out, they don't filter within the buildings, we're not recycling air, which is the best thing. We've also purchased air purifiers for each of the classrooms and areas, so that we used to have, last year we had some, we moved around, this year we have purchased enough so that each classroom can have one going in the classroom at all times.
Wow, that's nice.
That is good, that is very great, thank you. Fire season is just the new season.
It doesn't feel like it's going to go away.
I think we're just officially starting in fire season.
Yeah, that's, that's really nice for the students to have that in there.
Yeah, are there any other community members that would like to provide questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have any board members that have questions or comments regarding this policy? Being none, I will entertain.
No, I, I do have a question, sorry.
Well, Vicky.
So if a, if a student feels as though they're, they're better off not breathing the air, is there a place for them to go? Do they have access to an area where they aren't outside, or?
Well, we've never had a child asked to stay out. For recess, it's not very common, but we do have the ability for them to go in and check in with the health office. And we have a few children with asthma that have special plans in the case that they need to
Okay.
stay inside.
Good.
Thank you, great question, Vicky. All right, if there are no further questions or comments from the board, I will entertain a motion to approve the safety plan update.
I'll make a motion to approve the safety plan update, this is Trisha.
Thank you, Trisha, do I have a second?
Laurel's seconds.
Excellent, thank you Laurel. I will call for the vote, Vicky.
Vicky, wanna cut, I.
Chelsea, I. Laurel.
I.
Amber.
I.
Trisha.
I.
And Leanna.
I.
Thank you. All right, moving right along to item 3.6, the increased substitute teacher wage, and Amber, I know you spoke to this them already. Susan, did you have anything to add?
We found, at the beginning of the year, we had, we have one, eight, one substitute who is working for us. And I had one of, someone who is a substitute come to me and say, you know, you're significantly below what everybody else is paying, and so it's really hard to make the decision to come to Blue Oak, no matter how much we love Blue Oak, when it's this much of a financial loss to it. So that made me look into it. And I'm asking the board to at least temporarily increase the daily wage, and then when, when and if those, they come down, and Chico unified, that we would come down at that same time. But for now, it is a high demand and currently considered a high-risk environment, so.
So Susan, this time are you requesting that the increase be through the end of this school year?
Yes.
Okay. Great, do we have any questions or comments from the audience on this item? Alicia?
Yeah, I just want to say that I definitely support this increase and also be interested to keep or pay our substitutes more, especially if they have specific training in Waldorf education and pedagogy. Only because I know it can be hard sometimes for the students, when a substitute comes in and they're not familiar with the flow or the approach or, or whatever it is, you know, what, what makes Waldorf Waldorf? And I'm just wondering if you've thought about offering more for the substitutes who do have a background or some type of training in Waldorf education, because I find that, you know, it's very beneficial for our students to continue to have that when substitutes come in.
Thank you for your question, Susan.
I've not had any substitutes, I have had one in my five years here with a background in Waldorf supply, and it wasn't, didn't turn out to be someone who was of the quality we needed of ourselves, so it hasn't, it's, a Waldorf background is so unusual in the Chico environment, that I'm not sure the rate of pay is gonna make a difference.
One thing, though, historically, just for your information and for everybody here, historically, Blue Oak has paid above district substitute wages. And because of the, the desire and the importance of having a higher caliber of substitute teacher, so just for that information for historical. And do we have any other audience members to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will open it up to the board for discussion.
Laurel would like to speak.
Please, Laurel.
I feel strongly in support of this and having had the experience of having to find subs, it is very much tied to the rate of pay. And if this is kind of the going rate right now, and I appreciate that you said if it, if it drops, then Blue Oak would be wise to consider dropping it as, as well. But offering a lower rate of pay sometimes really impacts who you can get, so I'm, I'm in support of this, thank you.
Great, thank you Laurel. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Laurel, I move to approve. And I can say, item 3.6.
Thank you Laurel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Vicky, I think Leanna beat you to that one.
Good.
That was, that was quick, it was almost a tie.
Okay.
All right, so we've got Laurel with the motion, Leanna with the second, and I will call for the vote, Vicky.
Vicky, wanna cut, I.
Chelsea, I. Laurel.
I.
Amber.
I.
Trisha.
I.
Leanna.
I.
That takes us to item 3.7, the COVID response and reporting.
Yes, so we continue to, to work with the needs of, to, of safety for the COVID-19. And things change on a regular basis for us. We are working with USA Medical in order to have testing available onsite, and hope that that will be available to us within the next two weeks. That will be available for staff, students, and parents who wish to volunteer. So it's a fairly easy application process, you do have to agree that the school will get your, that you will allow the school to have your, your records of the results of the test in order for it to go through this process, but we are getting there, we are not quite there yet. We did have, we are tracking regularly, daily, the, any new cases that come up, we've had only three occurrences of exposure in the school at this point, which is good. We, I feel like our parents have been very conscientious about keeping students home or keeping themselves isolated in the case of an exposure in the family, and I think that that has made a huge difference, so I am very appreciative of how careful and consistent parents have been in reporting it to us and talking to us. And when we do have a case of exposure onsite, we do report it to Butte County Health. And they are collecting that data, and that's what's considered our contact tracing. So it's, it is a, it's not necessarily a log, feels like a logical system, people ask me questions and I'm, yes, that is what the California Department of Public Health is telling us to do. For example, we might have an exposure and then we don't hear about it for three or four days later because we don't know that, they don't know that yet, but that is all information that we work through. There was, I know there was a question earlier about about informing the school, there is a very tight regulation on who and how we inform about an exposure in the school, it's specific to those regulation on who and how we inform about an exposure in the school. It's specific to those directly connected to it. And the level of of explanation is very difficult. We are not even allowed to tell the teacher what is going on. So you, you know, that's really hard for the teachers, you know, well, were they, were they exposed? Were they, are they sick? We can't tell them that. So it is, this is what it is. This is the expectations and we are following the rules pretty much to the letter. And doing everything we can to keep people safe and follow the guidelines. The guidelines are very different when children are not in school. I know, you know, I see the question and I hear your concern about masking, but it is about children who are not in school and about people who are not vaccinated. There are different roles for the adults than for children. And we are very conscientious and careful where, when children are on campus. So.
And so just for, for rule clarification, fact clarification, and when children are not on campus, and the requirement is still that of the Butte County Public Health Department for like indoor space use, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. All right. Are there any audience members that have questions or comments on this particular item?
Chelsea, with an apology, can you repeat your last comment? I didn't hear it.
I just, sure, absolutely. I asked for a fact clarification and just to ensure that I understood that the facility, when students aren't present on campus, is, is following the California Department of Public Health and requirements for masking and being the, for indoor meat space use, you know, versus, versus when students are present, go and having to go by the requirements for students being present.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I just didn't hear it. Appreciate it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
I'll just say that I shared this document in the packet, which is, came from the state about mandated COVID reporting by schools. And it came out to us recently. And I want to make sure everybody was aware of what the expectations are and that we are doing this.
Great. Thank you so much for that. I know it's been a very tricky and fluid process. So thank you for staying on top of that. All right, audience members, Alicia, I see that you have a comment.
Just, yeah, clarification from what you just said. I'm wondering if we're looking at the same things, but it's for the California Public Health requirements that everyone is required to wear masks in indoors, K through 12, childcare and other youth settings. But it doesn't say only when students are, are there. And you, Susan, you made a great point about how, yeah, we, the parents are doing so much, right, to try to keep our children safe so they can keep coming to school. And, you know, we're working from home, we're wearing our masks when we go outside. We aren't doing a lot of things. So we don't expose, excuse me, our kids and other people at school. And so I'm wondering why it is that you all aren't wearing your mask now.
Well, Alicia, I can speak for myself and I'm willing to answer that. I won't require any of my fellow board members to answer that because it is a privacy thing to, to say that. But I made the choice to get vaccinated. And so I am vaccinated. And according to the Department of Public Health, and that allows me to have masks optional in an indoor setting. And so that is the choice that I've made that works for my personal health. And I will say that my fellow board members also get to make that personal choice for themselves. So I think with that being said, I will go ahead and move on with this item. So if there are any other questions or comments in response specifically to.
Okay, but you didn't answer my first question, which was, can you show me the documentation where it says California Public Health guidelines say that you don't have to wear masks indoors when students aren't present? Because I can't find that information. I know you have it written on your document, but where did you get it from?
Just read it yesterday on a new document that came out. I mean, it's pretty standard. It's in there somewhere, Alicia. I can't give you the specifics. I can afford you that. That the expectation is that we have masks on when children, when children are on site because it's about the fact that they cannot get a vaccine.
Thanks. So Alicia, I'll, I'll stop this here and allow Susan to follow up with you if there's additional information that you'd like on that.
Yeah, I'm just feeling really frustrated as a parent that we're doing all this and we don't see that you all are doing it as well. I mean, I, I'm sure you're doing it during the day, right? But I also understand, like, students are going to be there again tomorrow. And, you know, they get sent out of class if they're not wearing the mask. It's like a big deal that we tell our students. I'm just feeling really frustrated as a parent.
Thank you for expressing that. And I do hear your concerns. And Thea, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, just a similar question as before, and a part of me of this is available somewhere, but is there somewhere that the school's policy on how they're reporting to parents and families, I guess, about cases in the school? So I understand you're legally required to point to, report to Butte County Public Health, and you are, but as far as communication to parents, how, how is that happening? And when? And maybe that's somewhere already written up, but.
Well, I think that's kind of what's outlined in this policy. So, and Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but, and so the, the policy, that is what we're actually discussing and passing right now. And or, yeah, sorry.
Yeah. You know, the outlines, again, are following the direction from the Department, the California Department of Public Health and Butte County Department of Public Health as to how and who we can report cases to. It's, it is, because it is covered by privacy laws, we only can report it under certain circumstances. So and we are following those guidelines very specifically.
But Thea, I think if you wanted to actually see those guidelines or read through that, that is included in the board packet, which should be online, is that correct, Alex? If this was not one of the late documents, right? So it's in the board packet online. And then it's also part of the COVID-19 response. And so it should also be separately included on the website as well for access. So if you want to see the details on that, I'm going to actually have the opportunity to read through those details. And you're welcome to.
Okay, I'll look and see if I can find it there. But is there, just, just to make sure, is there opposition to having Blue Oak's total school, student and staff cases reported to the Butte County Community Public? Or is the school open to doing that? Right? I can go and I can look, I can see, you know, are there cases at Citrus? Are there cases at Inspire? I can't go and look anywhere. Are there cases at Blue Oak? And I would, I would like to be able to do that.
And I'm not sure where they get that information.
I just, if I could interrupt, I just wanted to say that this morning, when I went on to the parent portal, that's when I was informed. And that's probably, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, that's probably normal for COVID, right?
Sarah, I'm not, I was Sarah talking. I think I, I'm not sure that I fully understood your question.
No, I'm just saying that I found out through the portal. So that's one way that you can find out if there's a case.
Yes.
Yeah, we report to those who potentially were exposed to the portal, to the class.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's where I'm confused because it is reported to parents. But it's only reported to parents that are affected. And I think if I, if I understand correctly, I think Thea is referring to like that Butte County unofficial COVID dashboard that has the numbers by schools and students and staffs that are infected and things like.
Oh, so you could see.
So I think that's what you're referring to. And it sounded like Susan would be, is, will look into what the, what the requirements are. Because I'm not even sure where they specifically get those numbers from, because even.
Yes, my concern would be, what would be the purpose? And how much administration time would we be wasting doing something like that? If we're contacting the people that are directly affected, I'm not sure why we would need to do anything further.
Yeah.
And at that point, it might just be a waste of resources. We're a small charter school.
Yeah.
And I would not want to, like, spin our wheels on something that
Right.
is just data, but.
Right. And I'm, I think it's.
All everything's about right now.
Say that again, Sarah?
Data is very important. So I, I do have to interrupt.
I concur. I would feel better knowing, where are we? Are we a high transmission risk right now at Blue Oak or low transmission risk? And we only know that by looking at the data.
So I think, I, we hear you. And Susan said that she would look into where, where that site is even getting their data from, because my understanding is it is an unofficial tracker. And so finding out where, where that data is being pulled from, if it's the health department's providing it to them or the individual.
But let me interject. So if we know that there's only three cases, then we do know what type of exposure is here at Blue Oak.
Correct.
And we do understand where we're at, where we're talking about it right now. So that's why I'm trying to understand why we would need further data. It's, it's given to the county. We let parents know when we're exposed, or when they're exposed, where, who, when, the teachers, they know what they need to know. And we just reported that there are solely three. So I'm not, I'm just trying to figure out what extra data would.
No, no. So perhaps the answer is that there's a link that it goes to past you guys.
Yeah, I think. I think what I'm understanding, the question to be is outside of it being stated at this meeting, unless it's going to be regularly reported at this meeting, the number of cases or transmission rates in the school. Like where they could find that information other than.
Other than the school?
No, no, other than like coming to this meeting and getting a report at the board meeting of the number.
I mean, they can ask, right?
And so I think that's part of the issue of.
So we've had three exposures on campus and zero transmissions.
Okay.
And we may not just simply, we may be too small to be, I'm not aware of what this website is, but we simply may be too small. When it comes to statistics, often the smaller you are, the less likely they are to report private information because it's easier to figure out who and what it is. So so that it's quite possible, there's a reason we're not included on the website. It's not anything that we are not doing as far as reporting it. We are reporting it to the Public Health Department. They must be able to pull it from the Public Health Department. But when you're talking about the difference between a school of 300 and a school of 1,200, that, that may be why we're not being seen on that website.
That makes sense. And we're transparent as a school. I mean, that's data that you can get very easily.
Okay, just like where it says each city, there's a section at the bottom where it just says other. Yeah, and it's the smaller cities. So.
Makes sense. So maybe, maybe it's not too much work making it more readily available through parent square or something.
Right.
So they don't have to reach out to somebody for the, for the numbers.
Or finding out even what.
I really have some concerns about doing any more reporting than we're already doing. You understand when I can't even tell a teacher which of their students
Yeah.
might be exposed, what you're asking for, maybe information I cannot share with you.
I mean, that makes total sense to me because I think I would be on the other side of the parent, not wanting too much information exposed. And so I feel like the data that we're giving is extremely transparent. We're talking about it almost every single meeting. We're addressing it, we're, we're discussing it, we're giving information. And I know that if anybody wants further information, that Susan is going to give you everything she can possibly tell you, that she's allowed to.
Absolutely.
And I feel like at this point, we know already, just from this conversation, there's been three students that have only been
And zero transmission.
Zero transmission. So if we continue to talk about it every meeting, I think we'll probably always have it on the agenda. I think we decided that. This is going to be the place to get it. And the data doesn't come in that quickly anyways. And a lot of times, we don't even know until three or four days after. So I don't know if something daily or even weekly is going to be that helpful. Since it is reported in several different areas and everyone that can be notified is notified. I just, again, would worry about the administration, administrative costs that that would be giving us with not a really good result to, to make anyone feel any better at the end of the day, because the data is there and it can be given whenever people need it. And then also, we'll talk about it every meeting.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I, I want to thank you for those comments and tell you, without revealing too much here, I know a school, and it's personal for me, that's not doing anything near what Blue Oak is, is doing. And I also respect that Susan is an administrator and her staff must follow the privacy laws and such. And even though we may feel like we really legitimately should know more, she's bound by those parameters and absolutely must follow them. Thank you.
Right. And then Susan, just remind me, because we've already approved the COVID-19 response, with just this update on the mandated.
This, yeah, this is just our regular information that you've asked me to present.
I do have something COVID-related, but not about this. So before we move off of this.
That's why. I just wanted to make sure that we are just having.
Yeah.
A motion and an action.
And so I know that we've discussed a little bit about transportation for field trips. And with parents not being vaccinated, the challenge it's presenting for people that go on field trips because they don't have the drivers. I just wanted to bring that up again. What, you know, our thoughts. I know that's something that administration has been working on and coming up with solutions for. So. I know I had to run four miles the other day because I didn't have enough transportation. You're not allowed to do that again. I wish I would have gone to the black parks. Oh, no.
Yeah, and I know that transportation, just in general, has been a
Yeah.
a challenge across the board. The district schools are having to pay charter buses to even get their transporters because, because of the transportation issues. So.
So I did have it later, but I was.
Oh, sorry. I just was thinking under COVID, but yeah.
Well, we can, we can do it later. Yeah, we can, we can wait till that. Let's keep, in case somebody is coming in
Yeah.
later specifically for that item.
Yeah.
We'll keep them in order. All right. So thank you for that. Do any of the other board members have any other questions regarding the mandated reporting of COVID?
Thank you for your work on this. Thanks a lot.
Susan?
All right. Now, this is, this is what I like to see is many, many opportunities. So Susan, would you like to tell us about this Ford Foundation grant?
Yeah, so Ford Foundation, Buck met with and reached out to them about cameras. We had a situation a month or so ago, where, where I think I mentioned this earlier, a few, about three 15-year-olds decided it would be fun to hang out on campus on our roof and broke tiles. And Buck has a camera that he put up there. And so we got a picture of them and were able to find them. And get that addressed with their individually. But the police, when we did a, we discussed lockdown training and so, so forth a number of years ago, said it would be really helpful for us to have security cameras. And this again reiterated the fact that we need some level of security cameras. So Buck had reached out to Ford Foundation and purchased a security set camera system to be installed primarily with the purpose of protecting the premises when we're not here. I can't directly answer Alicia's earlier question about how much they'll be on during, while we're here. Because one of the issues would be around the need to use them in the case of a lockdown, when we would want to have Because one of the issues would be around the need to use them in the case of a lockdown, when we would want to have, um, footage of, um, whatever the situation was, so if there was something going on, um, that we wanted, that the police needed to know where that person was and so forth. Um, we would also use that for that purpose. Um, what Buck is thinking about and for other, as far as other times, um, we, I don't know at this point, um, the automatically recording activities, um, is what we're looking at as being an important thing for us to do right now. Um, we have no intention of using it as a discipline, uh, practice, you know, let's watch the kids what they're doing in the hallway and get them in trouble for that. Um, there's none of that or any intent to save any footage of children. But the the need to preserve the safety of the community is the purpose.
And access to that footage will be, uh, limited.
Yes, the footage would only be available to Buck and myself, and, um, of course, if necessary, the police.
Is that something that you would maybe write in a policy, who has access to it, just kind of?
We could do that.
Yeah. With that in mind, okay. That would probably be helpful.
Maybe even including in the safety policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
That seems like it does another standalone policy, but just maybe an addendum to the overall safety policy.
And how much was that damage? It was a lot of money, right?
I don't know.
You know, yeah, it was, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so considering what the cameras are going to cost and it being a grant, it overall, it's going to be an add, an overall add to the.
And it wasn't just, they they were here over the weekend and they were teachers and myself actually on site.
Oh.
And so it was, you know, at one point, a teacher was here by herself, and all of a sudden there were, um, three young men looking in the window in the atrium at her, and it, so it was sort of.
Oh, in the, oh, they got in the atrium.
Yeah.
They went up the number, so then they're.
So it was, and we did report it to the police and so on, so it was sort of a.
Yeah.
A point of like, no, we need to do this, we need to make sure, um, we have the ability to keep our staff safe in our community safe.
Okay, great. All right, I will open it up to the community for questions or comments. Alicia, what's the game we have raised?
Yeah, thank you. So with this kind of, um, this level of technology, I know comes a great level of responsibility. And I also know there's been cybersecurity issues with the ring specifically in that if it runs on wifi, hackers can get in externally and manipulate, you know, what they see or take recordings of what they see, thereby invading the privacy of the school and our students, and so I'm wondering, you know, if we're going to get these, do we have somebody, you know, who is adept at cybersecurity and keeping these safe and the videos safe? And keep Blue Oak from getting hacked, possibly getting hacked?
Uh, we do work with you tryouts of education on our technology, um, and they're pretty good at that.
So it'd be the same ones that you like Zoom meetings, right?
Mm hmm.
Okay, and we didn't have any problems with that, but I recall.
No, and I, and I understand, um, that that all of the district schools and the county schools also have cameras, so, um.
Yeah.
I would imagine that.
Exterior ones.
Yes, and but that BCOE who is, you know, manages other schools, um, and their cybersecurity likely has, I would say, a lot of experience with that specifically for schools and school security, um, to ensure that that footage is protected, so. Um, so yeah, that would all be Alicia, um, done through our cybersecurity team that's part of our contract with, um, the coming office of education. So specifically people who are, um, adept at school security as well, so, um, but that's a great question. All right, um, seeing no other comments or questions from the community, I will go to the board members, do any of my fellow board members have questions or comments regarding the approval of this grant application or what it is being used for? All right, hearing none, I will. Who's Laurel? Oh, there she is. I was just making sure I didn't miss you. All right, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the four foundation grant application.
This is Trisha, I'll make the motion to approve the four foundation grant.
Great, thank you Trisha, do you have a second?
This is Laurel's second. Oh, I apologize, I do.
Just have a virtual Duke out on that. All right. Sounds like Laurel's speaker overtook Vicky's speaker, so I've got Laurel with the second, Trisha with the motion, Laurel with the second. I will call for the vote. Vicky?
Vicky, you want to cut? I.
I'll see I, Laurel.
I.
Amber?
I.
Trisha?
I.
Leanna?
I.
Great. That takes us to item four, faculty trade level report. Take it away, Nick.
Um, all right, so hi, everybody. Um, I don't remember if I've introduced myself to this group, but I'm Nick Meyer and, uh, this is my tenth year as a teacher here at Blue Oak, my first year as co-chair. And probably most of you have heard your kids talking about the strict new PE teacher, and that is me, so. So that's me. So, um, I have a, so just in general, this first month back at school, you know, as you all know, it's, uh, it's been great to be back on campus, it's also scary and hard, and of course, we're trying to keep ourselves safe and all the kids safe and, navigating personal liberties and social responsibility throughout all that, while at the same time trying to bring a quality Waldorf education, with a mind towards equity and all that good stuff. So the teachers have a lot on their plates, but everybody's in good spirits because we get to be back with the kids, and that's the thing that makes us all the most happy. So I've got a little, what's this called? PowerPoint, that'll share with everybody. Does it show up on that screen too? Something like.
Oh, yeah. Alex, can you put it up on the big screen? Thank you.
There we go. So. Okay, so in the Lily Rose kindergarten, teacher Susan says the children have been enjoying being together, playing in the sandboxes, swinging and climbing, learning new songs, finger plays and verses, as well as games and dance as well in circle. The fairy tales of Sweet Porridge and the Pancake Mill have lent themselves to enthusiastic dramatic play. Finger knitting and the running stitch are skills that we currently, uh, currently learning how to do, but mostly kindergartners love to play. I can tell you all students K through eight love to play, so. Uh, Maple Rose kindergarten teacher Cheryl, who my daughter, who's in eighth grade now, was in teacher Cheryl's class long, long ago. Uh, so play, play, and more play fills our days. Here the children are settling in for story. This week would be on the story of the princess in the flaming castle. Painting, drawing, shaking bread, and a little stitching are morning activities after we sing a morning circle. In second grade, uh, they've been working on stories of pyros, legends, and golden hearted people. Our first block is full of form, drawing, and writings inspired by the story of George and the dragon. In circle time, we are learning our class play, George and the Dragon, and, uh, this is a bit out of date, because it says that they're going to do the play, but my understanding is now the play will be presented at the Harvest Festival, is that accurate, Susan?
That's great.
So the play will be presented at the Harvest Festival, but we still get to look forward to a great open house on Friday?
Friday.
Friday. And, uh, so there we have Ms. McDonald. Uh, and then Ms. Maycheck says in third grade, we are learning about ancient Hebrew legends, these stories speak deeply to children in the nine year change, we're experiencing their own beginnings of a fall from childhood as they transition into adolescence, learning practical skills like how to make challah bread, and learning traditional Hebrew sub dances such as Nigun Atik, I think that's how they pronounced it when I was with them the other day, which translates to English as ancient melody. And in Sarah Lee's class, what they've been up to, it looks like they've been learning about, uh, Norse, uh, lands and mythology, so they've got a Viking ship Scandinavia and, uh, learning about the Norse people. In fifth grade, uh, Ms. Hamblin, um, they made these great, uh, all about me posters that they hung up in the hallways, and it was a lot of fun to see the all about me posters that the kids made, and now they're going into botany, and Ms. Murray also, they they had, uh, pictures as well, and so she's got some pictures from their botany block. In seventh grade, they, um, oftentimes, especially in the upper grades, uh, one of the blocks is like a new artistic skill, like geometric drawing or perspective drawing. Um, and so it's also, it's usually fun to start the year off with an artistic block in the upper grades. Give the kids something new to work on and incorporate into their meaningless.
What? I said, those are so good.
Oh, yeah. Um.
Something to make them interested.
Yeah, and and.
Seventh graders aren't interested in much.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta get them interested. In sixth, seventh grade, eighth, all they care about is each other, that's all they want to do is talk to each other. Um, and so you give them some skills, and it's really cool because you see them start to immediately apply them to their main lesson pages, so I'm certain that in their Renaissance block, uh, Ms. Maderas, which was the block they're in now, um, a bunch of the kids were already applying these techniques. And Ms. Welch also began the year with, uh, perspective drawing. And then in eighth grade, they started with physics, and one thing that might not be known, too well known about our school and Waldorf schools in general is that actually we are very science heavy, it just might not look the same way, because in a Waldorf perspective, we believe that you should look at it from a phenomenological perspective, which is just a fancy way of saying you should look at it and say what you're seeing. Rather than, you know, oftentimes textbooks start from the scientific law and then give examples of how that law can be seen in nature. Whereas in a Waldorf school, you try to start from the nature, and you don't even really try to put it to a law, you just try to make observations and really spark the child's interest in the natural world. So starting with nature walks in first grade, that moves all the way up, and then in sixth, seventh, eighth grade, you have formal science lessons like these acoustics lessons that Ms. Jones has been teaching. Um, and I believe there's a couple of, uh, Ms. Sarah, um, who is our middle school handwork teacher, she says that she's super excited to get to spend time with them, um, because it'd been about a year and a half since she'd been in class with these kids. Um, and so they're working on, um, sewing, and I know they're creating bean bags for me to use in my class, and she says that, uh, the sixth and the eighth grader uh, all agreed that respect is their top priority, respecting the tools and materials, respecting whomever is speaking and treating each other how they like to be treated with respect. So part of these students is going to be a great year, she says they have needle felting, hand sewing, crocheting, and breaking out the sewing machines. And then in Spanish, Senora Swearingen, uh, said that they kind of started again with, uh, talking about experiences during the holidays, reviewed greetings and goodbyes, welcome songs, colors, numbers, and morning verses. I had a little first grader today, she said, do you know how to say the rainbow in Spanish? And I said, no, and she sang me the little song that Senora had taught them, so very, very lovely. And then with the upper grade, no, I don't. There was honor on Hado somewhere in there. All right, with the upper grades, we have reviewed the different dialogues of greetings, welcomes, and farewells, we have joined some psychomotor activities to remember the language and basic questions and conversation, and we are currently in Hispanic Heritage Month, um, which goes from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. So it actually ends the day of our Harvest Festival, and Senora has set up for a ballet folklorico trip to come and present at the Harvest Festival. Um, so that's very, very cool.
So cool.
So that's, uh, the PowerPoint that's going on there, and just in general, you know, everybody's just super glad to be back with the kids. And we're hoping we can do what we can to keep the doors open and keep moving in a positive direction, and I appreciate the time you threw at me.
Thanks, Nick.
Yeah. Nick, Nick, that was a great job, thank you, really, uh, well done.
Very efficient. Oh, it's great.
Angle.
It's so good.
It's my favorite part.
That's why I always brought that.
It's so good to see artwork hanging in the halls again, student work being done together and on display, and for the for the kids to be able to see what each other are doing, not to see each other, although that is taught parrot for middle school, just to see each other, but, um, no, it's it's such a, it's such a good feeling to be, to be back.
Yeah, on a different note, the middle schoolers being able to, um, have a bigger social circle has been excellent, so kudos to the middle school teachers for making that happen, because it's made my middle schooler a lot happier and less complaining at home. So we're all, we're all happier.
Yes, that's, that's been great to have more integration for the classes.
Make sure this in the minutes.
Yeah.
The middle school teachers were clearly part on that.
Oh, yeah, wow.
Put in the minutes that we noticed.
Yeah.
We are grateful, and our middle schoolers are less grumpy at home because of it.
Yes.
And they're loving.
Glad to hear that.
Which that is, that is its own in and of itself.
Yeah, new friends is good, that's not, you know, they don't get that as much here, and so being able to open that up, yeah, and sixth graders make their, seventh graders out, it's been nice.
And we've seen a difference in the behavior in classes too, for the same reason, like kind of like new kids.
Yeah.
Same kids they've been in school with for seven years.
Yeah.
Same reason that they're good, it's better at other people's houses than in your own, you make them slightly uncomfortable, they're on their best behavior.
Yeah, definitely noticed.
Great, great, all right, does anybody else have questions or comments for Nick? Okay, great, thank you. Let's move into item five, administration, Susan, send this off to the executive director.
I will kick it, kick it off with the executive director's report, I just got this out today, but I wanted to share, we do this weekly favorite moments, so I picked out a few of them. I could have filled two pages with favorite moments, um, over the last month, but because we love having our children back, having your children back on school. Um, one little dimple cheeked cherub came up with a sad face and another sprig knee. Me, oh, what happened? Cherub child, I slipped out there on the pork chop.
Blacktop?
There might actually have been a fake pork chop, who knows?
That is true, I love that.
Harvesting freshly warmed tomatoes and basils from the garden and tasting sunshine captured in a delicious fruity treat. Riley's class singing Wednesday while I was observing it made my day. On Friday, as I was leaving upper grade lunch, I had a sweet student walk beside me as she was, I went out to recess, she asked me, how long have you been an aide? I replied eighteen years. She said, wow, I guess that's why you take such good care of us. And many of us, we had, um, school picture day, and the smiles and the special clothes and the, um, and the group photos and everything, it was great fun, so. So those are a few of our, our favorites. Um, staffing, I'm pleased to announce that we've hired the last two employees, one aide and one, uh, facilities yard duty, and so we have a full staff for the first time, um, since two thousand and eighteen, so we're very excited about that, it feels, it feels good, like all the schedules are working out and clicking in and all of that. Um, now I remember, I think is the most common, and the last month, oh, yeah, now I remember what we were doing, it's it'd been a year and a half of not focusing on children being on site or what we do, and this happens or that happens, so I think.
Now I know, we're how to walk down the hall.
Oh, now I remember what we were doing before, so that's just kind of the, we are in that mode of still trying to figure it all out. Um, we did, uh, Alex and I met again with MC two, we are continuing that contract. Um, I talked to them about October, November being big months, and we, we went through and and did some work on targeting the marketing more to Chico area and to, um, to clicks that will be likely to lead to enrollment here, so we're still doing that. Um, diversity, equity, and inclusion, I talked about that earlier, our test, which is meeting, um, now monthly, and we are going to include reports on what we're doing in the acorn, so it'll be out there on a regular basis. So that's the, uh, bottom I stopped there on page, so it's on, talking about. So lots going on, though, lots of really good stuff.
That's great, thank you, Susan.
You're welcome. Um, so the next thing, I talked about this, and and we talked about it a little bit in our, um, about what happened in our finance committee, so we talked this through, this is where we were, um, in August before school started, two ninety one. Um, we have had a loss of about nineteen students, um, since then. Um, and there is always some adjustment at the beginning of the year. Um, I asked Kelly Maki to go through and give the reasons that, um, where they went or the reasons, and you'll see there's some, especially in the upper grade, which is very consistent, moving, decided to go to Bidwell or to another charter school, Chantry to Chico Junior, not a lot of that, but some. But, uh, a lot of moving to, um, homeschool, moving to, um, Oak Bridge is another homeschool program. And things around where they live or where they're moving to, so that's, um, a high percentage of of what's going on, um, it's somewhat reflective, we're a little higher, but we are reflective, Duke County has lost about five point seven percent of, um, K twelve students, Chico Unified, two point six percent, the state as a whole is somewhere around two point six, two point seven, so. Um, it's an issue we have, I was on a website that showed us in finance, it was on a webinar. Um, and, um, And a number of schools from, from Oregon have had exponential growth in their schools. Yeah, so people are moving to more rural areas and out of the state of California right now, so.
And with Chico Unified, it sounded like their numbers were lower. However, it is my understanding that they've seen a lot of growth in their homeschool programs. So part of why their percentage might be higher is because they're not leaving Chico Unified if they transfer to Oak Bridge. So from a discussion I heard, they have had a good number transferred to Oak Bridge. So I think that they're probably seeing similar rates, you know, to the rest of the county now.
We've talked a lot, there's been a lot in the news and just all over the place about kids missing school, missing students, you know, their friends. But I would warrant, there's also a surprising number of students who found out they liked being home and maybe the more relaxed environment of being home and doing school. And I would guess we've lost some kids to, I mean, all the way around, not just Blue Oak, but lost students to kids who just prefer to be home and not be under some of the pressures of school, either social or environmental. So I guess it doesn't surprise me.
Susan, did you have more to add before I open up to that?
No, I mean, it is at a level, Jim and I will be talking about how it will affect the budget. We do have, as you know, significant reserves right now because of the COVID money we've received. So he and I will have to go through and do some planning before we come back to you with our next budget revisions. But wanted to let me know where we stand right now.
With the marketing, that also is like a push to bring enrollment up, but are we looking for that for more for next year?
At this point, it's more likely to affect us for next year than for this year. So, but we will not refuse them if they show it.
Yes. I did see we had a couple wait lists and that's just because those few classes that are fuller.
Yes, so we have.
They're just not in the right grades.
Yeah, we have classes that are already at our max of twenty-eight. I'm gonna tell you that I've had some try that, like, well, we could go into third grade instead of, you know, no. And then we have a number of students that will be, are applications for kindergarten that are out that are, are children that will be turning five this year. And so we'll be, we'll have spot for them when they do turn five.
Oh, that's great. Oh, okay.
So they have that. So we do have that going on in the kindergarten realm. We will in the future talk about the changes to transitional kindergarten and how that will affect our kindergarten. And has, over the next five years, they expect to have all four-year-olds be able to be offered a spot. It's still going to be voluntary, but offer the spot. So that may change the dynamics of the lower grades quite a bit. So that's another thing I want to be netted research.
For sure, yeah.
I'm sure more to come.
Okay, I will open it up to the community for questions and comments. Alicia, would you give your hand brief?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thanks for this information about, you know, the difference in enrollment. It makes me think about a few minutes ago when some parents asked about access to data about COVID cases at Blue Oak. But we were refuted and told that that's, you know, we can't share it because the community is so small and that would be a privacy violation. Whereas here, I'm clearly seeing who left and why, and now where they are and who's using special education. So I maybe think that there's something going on here where either we do want to protect the data or we don't. But the data in this document hasn't been privatized, shall we say. It's very clear in fifth grade who the twins are. You know, if you know anyone in fifth grade, there's one pair of twins and now where they are and that they're utilizing special education. And if that were me, if that were my family, I'd be very uncomfortable with the school sharing that information about me when I left and my children.
I'm not sure that's true, so.
It's on the document that we're looking at. It says, why did they enroll?
Why did they dis-enroll? I'm not sure you would know that particular family, which.
I'm not saying this for you to question what I know and what I don't know. What I'm saying is that you refused a parent's request for data at the school citing privacy. But here you are giving out private information about students and their families and their use of special education or not and where they are physically, which seems like pretty private data. So it's just, it's not matching up. When we asked for something, you said no, but then here is pretty private data for students and their families.
Alicia, if I could speak to that, one thing, as my understanding of, of that earlier conversation about information being shared regarding COVID and it being a small school, I was an administrator in a very, very tiny school. And it was interesting because when you go on the state website to get information about test scores and grades and the number of students, you know, passing and not, none of that was shared. Our school was deemed, it was not an administrative decision, it was not a board decision. But for very small schools, often the reporting requirements are the same. But what's reported out to the public is not. And I will just say that was how I understood the information about what was shared regarding, you know, the COVID. And my understanding is that Blue Oak is a small enough school population that some of what is reported, not by Blue Oak administration or not by choice of the board, is different than what's reported for some of the bigger schools. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the community on this item? Let's see, now I'll open it up to the board for any questions or comments we're bringing to the panel.
Well, I think, just to go back, I think that we are giving the information and the data. We need to stop being posted on the website, so I'm a little bit confused on the comment. So we are saying cases and transmissions. So we are willing to give that information. So just as a, to clarify, I guess, what data that we're refusing to get. And where can we find that information? Because that's what the parent was asking. They wanted to know when they could look and see how many cases are at Blue Oak. Because that's not even something I knew. I knew there were cases in our class, but I didn't know what was happening in the rest of the school. And that would be nice to know. So where can we find that information? Well, I think it sounded like the commitment was to be reported out at the next board meeting. So at our monthly board meetings, that data will be available. Oh, I thought Tricia was just saying it is available for us.
She said it was made available to you at this public board meeting tonight. It will also be posted and reflected to the community to reference of the.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about the number of cases tonight already. So you, you got that part?
Right, and you, you received actually more information. I looked at the Chico Unified website, they only report on a two-week basis. So you actually received our annual information rather than in comparison to what Chico Unified is reporting for their schools.
But I am going to move this forward because we are off topic for the item of the agenda that we are on at this time. So if there are no additional questions on the enrollment comparisons or that information, I will ask that we move to item 5.1.2, the Brown Act training.
I will ask, I will ask in the future to maybe not have such private information shared on why folks disenrolled. I just think that families would not maybe want their private information shared so publicly about why they left.
Thank you. Your comments are noted. Susan, AB 361 from X.?
Yes, so AB 361 has gone through the legislature and is currently on the governor's desk to be signed. It would, and I said this, it would allow us to continue to, to have the Zoom, the board meet through Zoom. So that would mean that we would, you know, right now we're, we're set that in October, we have to all be together in the same room. This now extends that exempt, is if it's signed by the governor, which he has not signed yet, but he is expected to. It would allow us to continue as long as there is a state, state of emergency. So allowing us to go through January 2022 at this point. Again, governor needs to sign it and then monthly we'll have to say, we are honoring that this is still a state of emergency and therefore we're doing that. So that's, that is information. I thought the board would appreciate that.
Yeah, that was very exciting news at our, our training. And then also just of note, that even outside of this, we can always now going forward, offer remote access to the meeting site, community members. So even after we're no longer in a state of emergency or it's no longer required or no longer authorized for the board to, to be able to meet virtually, we can still offer the meetings virtually for community members, which I thought was neat.
I think that's nice. Yeah.
Yeah, so I like that. And I think it's great for this to continue for those who need it. Excellent. And if I remember correctly, they expected that to be signed by the end of the month, which is when the previous expires September. Yeah, the previous expires at the end of this month and they're expecting that.
That is the expectation, but I'm sure that if it's going to be signed, it will be by the time we have our next meeting.
Yes. So that's great. Thank you. All right, if there are no questions on AB 361, then we'll move into 5.1.3, the MC2 advertising update.
I mentioned this already in previously somewhere, I mean, my director's report, but I'll, I'll go forward. We are talking about possibility of video presentation that we'll work on, increasing, as I said, advertising in October, November. We are working on Facebook ads along with the Google ads that we have done. So we are continuing to expand that and focusing a little bit more strongly on kindergarten with the idea of building next year's enrollment.
Great. And I've definitely been seeing the, the Instagram presence and that looks really great. And like, really like seeing those Mythbusters and really just getting the, the facts out there. So, you know, I'm on Instagram pretty regularly, I think that's a lot, so. Kudos. Great. Any questions on our advertising update? Excellent. So that'll take us into 5.1.4, you brought up earlier, that are transportation.
Yes, so I reached out earlier, we had the Flax field trip where the kids ended up walking two miles. So I'm grateful that parents, they, we definitely wore them out. So they were tired when they got back and they went home and were probably really mellow.
The parents or the kids?
Oh, anyway, but so they walked to the Flax farm, which was an amazingly exciting field trip. And it was also just really good even for older grade teachers to start going, oh, we could do a field trip. I mean, because that's one of those, oh, yeah, we, we do that sort of thing. So definitely some ideas about outdoor field trips. And Malacca Diggins reached out to us this week to re-invite us to their program this year. So we are hopeful that that will happen in the spring. But as Tricia brought up, transportation is a challenge. We have, I've had a number of discussions with teachers about parents driving and what it takes and the vaccine or the testing. And there's definitely a protocol for that, but masking is. But just in general, how it's becoming more difficult to get parents to drive on field trips. So I did reach out earlier this year to Forest Ridge Charter School, which has buses and bus drivers, to talk to them about whether or not we can borrow. And so she is, Krista had talked, and I talked about it in years before. And so she's reaching out to her insurance company and to the board to see if they're willing to share that service at some level. So there's a possibility there. I've done a few preliminary looks at potentially buying some fourteen passenger vans. Fourteen passenger vans can still be driven by parents, but can be used to transfer. At least that's my past experience unless rules have changed.
I think it's fifteen plus that you have to.
I think so too. I just, that's the class two you would need to have and that's what.
Fifteen kid. Yeah, so do they usually just have their own insurance for that or is the school insurance covering them?
The insurance, they have to be an insured driver. So whatever you drive, children, whether you're driving your own car or not, you have to be an insured driver. And then the.
So their own insurance would cover then and then the school would cover their.
Right, so.
Um, because I know those higher insurance coverage too, for the parents that have to transport, that sometimes is a challenge.
Yeah, so moving down the path and figuring out how we can do a better job of supporting field trips.
Susan, I have a question or, or for everybody actually. I don't know Chico well and I don't know the, the bus system well, but I wonder if anybody's looked at the bus routes, the various public transportation routes in Chico and looked for possibilities along the way. Like I'm thinking, for example, there might be a bus that runs along the Esplanade that would go to the Gateway Science Museum to the Chico CSU Chico lab. There's a wonderful lab there with activities for, for young students. And so I wonder if somebody's kind of taken the bus schedule and looked at it and looked at the routes and explored the various field trip possibilities along the way. Thank you.
Laurel, I can actually speak to, in my son's class, his teacher has done that in the past and our whole class has ridden the bus together down to the Gateway Museum and over to CSU Chico. I'm not sure what that looks like in the current COVID climate, because this was pre, pre-COVID and I don't know how that looks with ensuring the children's safety on a public transportation. And so I, I do believe I, that because it's public transportation, I do believe that there is a mask requirement for all, so that potentially is an option to ensure that our students are potential eager in that, so.
I'm not surprised somebody's thought of that. And I would even guess they may have limits on the number of passengers that can be on the bus. But it was just a, maybe not even a suggestion, just a thought.
No, I think it's definitely worth, because you know, like Susan said earlier, that, oh, I remember, oh, yeah, we used to do that. Oh, yeah, that could be an option again. So that's, that's a great, a great thing to bring back up, Laurel. Thank you.
I think another thing they're doing, Laurel, too, is like field trips onsite.
Yeah, bringing teams in.
Bringing teams in and doing a field trip onsite for the students. So at least it's kind of a change in their routine and they feel like they're getting that experience still. So that's, I think, we, it hasn't happened yet, but I know.
I think it's coming this week even. And we're, the, one of the Odyssey teams that do the team building and previously have done the ropes courses. One of their Odyssey teams is coming and doing an onsite field trip where they're bringing the team in and then getting to do some of those experiential things with the class. So it's pretty neat.
So it might be nice to see if there's more opportunity for that, some of these.
Riley and I talked about this, but I'm involved at the Honeybee Discovery Center in Orlando. And we have onsite field trips. So one of the things we're going to be working on is our ability to take our show on the road. Most of us who are beekeepers have done it many times and. Most of us who are beekeepers have done it many times and it's a lot of work, but that's, that can be a really good arrangement. And I know Riley and I talked about some of the more, I'll say academic, and I don't mean that, I hope that sounds okay, but the more academic field trips that I've done for kids as classroom presentations.
Yeah, that's great. That is great. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments or input on transportation?
I think it's exciting.
Yeah, yeah, good news that we have some prospects.
Do you think, um, yeah, my other thing is, do you think parents know, do you think that they're aware that there's a bit of an issue? Because I, I didn't volunteer for that field trip because I wasn't, I didn't know. Like I probably would have taken off, but usually our class has a lot of volunteers. I just, that one, I was like, oh, it snuck off on me. So I wonder if we've told parents, do you think, maybe on an individual, but if we've like expressed to them and maybe some parents would be willing that don't normally do them, but knowing that we have.
Yeah, maybe the teachers need. And that field trip, I think the two miles was fine. Like I think it was a, the more of the challenge there was, there wasn't a bathroom there. So I'd drive my car there and then run back to walk with them and then drive my car back. So that was more the challenge. So we had a car, so we needed to use the restroom.
Oh, yeah.
Bathroom would be, that would be a difficult one. But yeah, I think maybe it's just that teachers need to reach out to their classes or probably short on volunteers. So.
Yeah, and she reached out, but I just, you know, as a whole, if they know, if the parents kind of know or
Yeah.
Get your paperwork in.
Ahead of time. Because you're willing that your people.
Exactly.
Because I think that there's short on volunteers in the class as well for the same reasons.
Oh, and that's been, and that has been expressed. I've heard teachers talk about that.
Volunteer shortage in this world.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe just reminding, because I know the beginning of the school rush and parents are just sometimes just trying to catch up. And we're not always paying attention as much as we could be when those things come through. A nice reminder, we are still trying to do some field trips. Parents that can volunteer, we do still need some volunteers in classrooms. So.
Yeah.
Reach out and check on your teacher. Make sure they're okay.
They are.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
We're on to closed session now.
Yes. Oh, yes. So it sounds like we're, we're wrapped up on that item. And while Alex is putting us into closed session, we'll take a couple minute break. So if you, and then we'll all gather back when she's got us all where we're supposed to be.